Oh, beautiful. For spacious skies, for amber waves of grain, for purple mountain majesty above the fruited plain. America, America.
Roll call.
Pauls? Thompson? Gurnat? Gray? Jerem? Milton? Mr. President.
Please rise for the pledge and emication by Councilmember Thompson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have a prayer to say, but we're going to go back to the beginning of the year. We're starting off with a brand new slate in many cases, although we have some old things that were put in there. I just like to pray for a fresh start in the beginning.
City Clerk certified publication on daily record on January 3rd. Notice for quick council and regular city council meeting, January 7th, 2014. Current copy of the Meetings Act is posted in white binder on the East Wall legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and may law, by law, may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device.
Zoning ordinance on final ring and plan board attachments. Item number five, ordinance to rezone property located at 5612 and 5614 Charles Street from R-435 Single Family Residential District High Density to R-5 Urban Family Residential District. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number five is today. Are there any proponents? See none any opponents. Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Second. Roll call.
Pauls? Thompson? Gurnat? Gray? Jerem? Milton? Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed seven to zero. We'll take items six through eight. It's all one case. Six is resolution of preliminary platent titled Southwest Park Replat III located at 13315 C Street along attached conditions hereby accepted. Preparation final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Seven is resolution that the replat transmitted herewith entitled South Park Replat III is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And eight is a subdivision agreement with BTW Properties Incorporated is hereby approved.
Public hearings on items number six, seven, and eight are today. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Council Doug Dreeson, 10836 Old Mill Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Dreeson. Any other proponents? See none any opponents. Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Pauls? Thompson? Gurnat? Gray? Jerem? Milton? Mr. President.
Yes.
They're adopted seven to zero. Items nine through 11 are one case. Nine is resolution of preliminary plat entitled TSL Industrial Park with a waiver of street footage located at 2401 North 11th Street along attached conditions hereby accepted. Preparation final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Ten is resolution that the plat entitled TSL Industrial Park is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And 11 is the resolution subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearings on items number nine, 10, and 11 are today. Proponents, please.
Doug Kellner, Thompson Dreeson, Dorner, 10836 Old Mill Road, here on behalf of the applicant. May I be able to answer any questions if you have them?
Thank you. Any other proponents? See none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls? Thompson? Gurnat? Gray? Jerem? Milton? Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number 12, resolution that the preliminary plat entitled Country Club Estates located southwest of 66th and State Street with a request for a waiver of sidewalks along attached conditions hereby accepted. Preparation final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number 12 is today. Any proponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Scott Loes with Lampard, Neersen &amp; Associates, 14710 West Dodge Road, here to answer any questions on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you, Scott. Any other proponents? See none any opponents. Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Pauls? Thompson? Gurnat? Gray? Jerem? Milton? Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Items 13 through 15 are one case. 13 is resolution that the preliminary plat entitled Ortman II located at 3204 Ponca Road with a request for a waiver of sidewalks along with attached conditions hereby accepted. Preparation final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. 14 is the plat entitled Ortman II is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And 13, or 15 is the subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearing on items number 13, 14, and 15 are today. Any proponents?
Ben Douglas, Dreeson, 10836 Old Mill Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls? Thompson? Gurnat? Gray? Jerem? Milton? Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 78, due to no meetings being held January 21st, 2014, agenda item number 16 shall be laid over three weeks to January 28th for publication of public hearing. Special use permit large group living. Item number 17, resolution special use permit application submitted by NFWLHC for a major amendment to special use permit to allow a large group living with reasonable accommodations in an R7 medium density multifamily residential district located southeast of 49th Avenue and Sailor Street is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval, and we have an amendment.
Public hearing on item number 17 is today. Are there any proponents? Mr. Levy.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Members of the council. David Levy, Barrett Home Law Firm, 1700 Farnham Street, here on behalf of the applicant. As I think you all know or may know, this major amendment is before you to implement a settlement between the applicant and some neighbors who had concerns about the project and had filed a lawsuit. And representatives and neighbors are here as well to express their support for the revised project. Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? See none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, if you could, if I can get you back to the microphone for very quickly. Are there any, what, I think I know most of what's in here and what has been approved, but are there, what specifically is this amendment? How does this differ from what you have, what we had, what had originally been gone forward?
What was in your packet inadvertently was the old operational statement from the original application. This is the updated one. The major change is that this one shows that there is no longer on-street parking on Sprague Street, which was a major concern of the neighbors. Now all of the parking will be on the project site.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I make motion approved.
Amendment.
Approve the amendment.
Motion second. Note for the lights. Roll call.
Pauls? Thompson? Gurnat? Gray? Jerem? Milton? Mr. President.
Yes.
As amended.
Roll call.
Pauls? Thompson? Gurnat? Gray? Jerem? Milton? Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed as amended, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 78, items numbered 18 through 21 shall be laid over three weeks January 28th for publication and public hearing. Liquor. Item number 22. Goldies 5502 North 103rd Street, Class C liquor license and application, no location.
Public hearing on item number 22 is today. Proponents, please.
Bruce Anderson, 7820 South 28th, representing the corporation, Milker, applicant for the license.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Pauls? Thompson? Gurnat? Gray? Jerem? Milton? Mr. President.
Yes.
It is adopted seven to zero. Item number 23. Dulces 12317 West Maple Road, Class C liquor license and application, no location.
Public hearing on item number 23 is today. Proponents, please.
Jason Coeur, 12317, South 181st Circle, representing Coeur Mor Restaurants LLC.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none any opponents. Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Pauls? Thompson? Gurnat? Gray? Jerem? Milton? Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number 24 is Pitch Coal Fire Pizzeria, 5021 Underwood Avenue, Class C liquor license and application, no location.
Public hearing on item number 24 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Aaron McKeever, representing Pitch Pizzeria, 5021 Underwood Avenue, and here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? See none any opponents. Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Just one question for you. So obviously, management change here, but no change to the operation and nor to the location or anything else that's going so well there, so well there, right?
Correct. Just merging with Willie and going to expand the operation.
Great. Let us know if we can help you. It's a great asset to Dundee District right there, and my kids love your restaurant.
Thank you. You sure will.
Thanks. Roll call.
Pauls? Thompson? Gurnat? Gray?
Well, since Pittsburgh kids like it, I'll say yes.
Jerem? Milton? Mr. President.
Except for the Brussels sprouts.
Except for Brussels sprouts.
Yes.
I'm with them on that.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number 25 is Holiday Inn Express and Suites, 6939 North 102nd Circle, Class I liquor license and application, no location.
Public hearing on item number 25 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Steve Young, here representing Paradise Properties, Holiday Inn Express and Suites, to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? See none any opponents. Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Pauls? Thompson? Gurnat? Gray? Jerem? Milton? Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any members of City Council, my cause and I, placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken out by City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they are removed, as otherwise provided by City Council Rules of Order.
The public hearings on agenda items number 26 and 27 are held December 17th.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Pauls? Thompson? Gurnat? Gray? Jerem? Milton? Mr. President.
Yes.
26 and 27 are passed seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items number 28 through 46 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent.
Mark Williams, Parsonage Van den Eck Williams, 170th and Marcy, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm here representing Total Wellness and Alan Cole with respect to agenda item number 48.
We're just going through 46.
I apologize. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, we'll call you back up when that comes. Mr. Schenzel.
My name is Dave Schenzel, 319 South 50th Avenue. I'm here for item number 43. I'm here on behalf of Dundee Memorial Park Association. We're here today to honor somebody who has given countless hours to our community and our association, Mr. Dan Rock. I know Councilman Festerston and Councilman Jerem know him well and know of the many things he has done for our community. And this is the first time that our association has come forth with commemorative street naming. And when we thought about this, it was the unanimous opinion of everyone involved that Dan Rock should be our, the first one to have this done in our neighborhood. I just want to, for the record, put in some of the things that Dan has given to our community. One of the things Dundee Memorial Park is best known for are the 450 flower baskets that go up on our light poles every year. Dan was one of the first people to come up with that idea. He has managed it for the last, going on 16 years now. He maintains the watering trucks. He organizes the volunteers to go out and water each and every day. This is a man who's so dedicated to this project that he basically installed a fire hydrant in his front yard so that our water trucks could be watered, filled up that much faster. Dan, years ago, when there was a rash of garage fires in our neighborhood, Dan organized the Neighborhood Watch for that, to bring an end to that. He created the Light Pole Caretaker Program where people in our neighborhood adopt a light pole and help maintain it. It's one of the things our neighborhood is very proud of, our historic lights. About a decade ago, Dan organized and edited a history book on Dundee, which you can still even get in the bookstores. Dan has provided free legal advice, not only to our neighborhood association, but also to many other neighboring neighborhood associations, and he always does it free of charge. He refuses to be paid for any of his work. Dan was involved in the creation of the Dundee Clock in the business district. He's also been involved with our annual tree planting program that we've planted over 100 trees in our neighborhood. Dan helps us organize the scouts that help plant the trees. Some of the other organizations that Dan has been involved with, Boy Scouts, St. Margaret Mary Church, the Knights of Columbus, Dundee School PTO, Central High PTO, Lewis and Clark PTO, and the American Day of Business Association. So I appreciate your consideration of this resolution, and we look forward to its passage. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rock incidentally stopped by our office this morning, and Councilman Jerem and I tried to embarrass him appropriately in private, but now it is public, to thank him for all he has done for the Dundee Neighborhood Association, as you described there. It's more often times than not that I see him actually driving the truck and watering the flowers in the neighborhood, in addition to organizing everything and managing the program. So I think we agree with all your comments that he's been instrumental in making that neighborhood great. Thanks.
Motion approved.
We got one more.
My name is Zach Trimmer, 1116 Jackson Street. I'm here on item 42 as an opponent, or proponent, excuse me, for a patio out front of our business, Borgata Brewery Distillery. We think we're going to have a vibrant space out front to continue to make Jackson Street a better street.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion approved.
Public hearings are closed. There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Pauls? Thompson? Gurnat? Gray? Jerem? Milton? Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 28 through 46 are adopted seven to zero. Resolutions. Item number 47, resolution that attached 9th and Jones Tax Center Financing Remodel Project Plan for the project site located at 901 Jones and 716 South 9th Street, which proposed to redevelop the site into a mixed-use development market rate apartments with ground floor commercial spaces and structured parking, with the city's participation through the allocation of TIF is hereby approved.
Public hearing on item number 47 is today. Proponents, please. Ms. Hadley.
Good afternoon. Bridget Hadley, City Planning, for you as a TIF project. And the project site is located, as you can see on this map, this is in the downtown area, so Old Market, Jones Street here, Leavenworth here, the South 10th Street Bridge, and then 9th Street to kind of give you the orientation. And what is outlined in black is the actual redevelopment site. And here is a closer view of the same site, 9th, 10th Street Bridge, Leavenworth and Jones there. This particular project contemplates maximizing the entire site and redeveloping it to create multi-family units, market rate units, 123 market rate units, ranging from studios to one and two bedrooms. And this particular site, as some of you may recall, right here, this vacant site that has been vacant for about nine years, was the former site of the Butternut Building site, which are building that burned down in 2000. It was demolished later that year in 2000, and, excuse me, 2004 is when it burned down, and it was demolished later that same year. That was a TIF project, and that TIF project was rescinded in July of 2006. So that particular site that's vacant will comprise the new structure that will be mixed use, four to five stories, with market rate apartments above and then ground floor commercial space, about 8,500 square feet of ground floor commercial space. This is an open-air garage that will be customized for parking, and then this is the existing warehouse structure. And here's another view from it, from looking under the South 10th Street Bridge and along Leavenworth Street, that will be rehabilitated to create additional parking. The result will be about 190, plus or minus, maybe a few spaces of total parking spaces. And also, there will be some reconfiguration of the parking along 9th and Jones Streets to allow for additional parking and looking at parallel parking as well. The TIF is a request for up to about $3,334,948. And this particular project, as I said, the site has been vacant, unused, severely underutilized in the downtown apartment for downtown area for nine years. So this particular project will take that site and redevelop it, make it highly productive. It will also bring much-needed additional residential density into the downtown area, which is in conformance with our downtown master plan. It helps to bring in additional economic activity as we bring in more residents into the area to help revitalize that southern edge of the Old Market. And ultimately, it will enhance the tax base. I do have just a few more, I guess, pictures of the elevation. This is the western elevation, and this is the northern elevation. And then this is the eastern elevation. The project site is located in the community redevelopment area and meets the requirements of the Nebraska Community Development Law, and with that, I would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none any opponents. Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Pauls? Thompson? Gurnat? Gray? Jerem? Milton? Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number 48, resolution that the attached addendum to the consulting services agreement to extend the contract with Silverstone Groups for one year is hereby approved. A is communications opposing, and B is communications from the Human Resources Director.
Public hearing on item number 48 is today. Proponents, please. Ms. Frost.
Good afternoon. I'm Mickey Frost, and I'm the Director of Human Resources. The Human Resources Department would like your favorable consideration of this amendment to extend a consulting arrangement with Silverstone Consulting to assist us in managing our considerable investment in employee benefits. I believe you had some questions this morning about the substance of those, that contract. I'm happy to answer any additional questions. I do want to address the objection that is filed by Mr. Alan Cole, who is involved in a company called Total Wellness. His objection is primarily to our RFP, the decision that we've made relative to the employee wellness program. That matter is not before you today. It will be before you in the next couple of weeks. Silverstone has assisted us in drafting the RFP and evaluating the RFP, and we have decided to choose a company called Simply Well, and Mr. Cole has taken objection to that. I was not part of the process with the wellness contract, but I have investigated, and I feel comfortable that the process was fair, that it was, there was objective criteria in making the recommendation, and that Silverstone was very valuable, and that their involvement was entirely appropriate. Today, Scott Simon and Jeff Jorth are here from Silverstone, and they would be happy to answer any questions, as well as Stephanie Unger, the benefits manager, who is, who works with Silverstone on a number of our benefits programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none any opponents.
Mark Williams again. Apologize about that. Parsonage Van den Eck Williams, 170th and Marcy, here in Omaha, Nebraska. I'm here representing Mr. Alan Cole and his business, Total Wellness, opposing item number 48. And just to give you a little bit of understanding of the reason why we're, we decided to come here, I spoke with Mr. Endenbosch this morning. There is a meeting scheduled for tomorrow morning with my client and, I believe, Silverstone and city officials to discuss the RFP process for the wellness plan. But the reason why we decided to come down here and express our opposition is, at its core, what my client's concerned about is how the RFP process was managed. It appears, and again, we haven't had this meeting yet, so I don't have all of the facts, but it appears that there might have been a little bit of a conflict of interest between the party awarded the contract and the consultant who is hired by the city to assist in running the RFP and awarding the contract. Back in December, when my client learned about this, he contacted the city, contacted Mr. Brown, and a meeting was scheduled. This was back on December 17th or 18th. They scheduled this meeting for tomorrow. It was the time that they said they could pull everybody together to have the meeting. So my client would like the opportunity to have this meeting to figure out if this process actually was conducted appropriately, and whether or not it is appropriate for the city to continue utilizing Silverstone based upon how they ran this RFP, if in fact there was a conflict of interest and one of the parties that participated in writing the RFP was ultimately awarded the contract or an affiliate of theirs. I mean, these are the questions that we've raised, and we're willing to sit down and listen and find answers to those questions. It's just concerning to us that that meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, but the contract or the agenda item to have another year of services by Silverstone was scheduled for today. And that's why we had called and asked if we could have our meeting before today, before this public hearing, and evidently, the timing didn't work out for it. So our opposition is simply that you give my client an opportunity to discuss with the city, with Silverstone, whoever the representatives that are appropriate, to discuss how this process was worked, how it happened, just to ensure that it happened in accordance with appropriate law and ethics for the city's benefit. Now, Mr. Cole is here today, would be happy to answer any questions that you might have, and I would also.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other opponents today? See none. Public hearings closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, Mickey, would you come back up?
I'm Mickey Frost, Human Resource Director.
I think I just heard Mr. Williams say that his client was the unsuccessful bidder or appears to be an unsuccessful bidder on a contract that's not before us today.
Yes.
And what's before us today is the consulting agreement with Silverstone.
Yes.
So the meeting tomorrow with Mr. Williams and his client will address how the RFP worked in terms of how it got to the decision to recommend who the apparent successful bidder is.
Yes.
And then that will eventually come before us on our agenda.
Yes.
And he'll have an opportunity to appeal his rejection of his bid.
He certainly will.
And that would come before us.
Yes.
So our decision today on Silverstone really is without prejudice to Mr. Williams's client to appeal the rejection or the apparent recommendation to reject his submission.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Motion approved. Second. Ms. Milton.
Mickey Frost, Human Resource Director.
Thank you, and we did speak at length, I know, this morning, but I was wondering if you could just do, just a brief recap. I think Silverstone performed extremely well for us, and their recommendations have resulted in saving the city quite a bit of money. Am I correct?
Yeah, we entered into the contract on October first, two thousand and eleven, and Silverstone advised us on a number of issues. One of the most significant was our decision to have a third-party administrator and analyze the responses to the RFP. That was a very extensive process. They've also been very involved in meeting with our TPA Coventry in terms of identifying areas where there's possibility for savings and looking at our claims experience. They will continue to be involved with assisting us in the wellness program, which is really a whole new culture for the city. The goal of the wellness program is to create a culture where people accept responsibility for taking care of their health, and that health insurance is a supplement to that. We use Silverstone also for all of the very new complex regulations relative to the Accountable Care Act. They're experts in that area and have used them regularly. We also use them in terms of identifying trends in the market relative to health insurance in areas that might be possible topics for negotiations. So there's a number of services. We meet with them probably every week, and they dedicate a considerable amount of time in terms of providing our expertise.
And one of the things you mentioned, because I was questioning really whether we should make Silver, I commend Silverstone for doing an excellent job for us in the past, so my comments have absolutely nothing to do with their performance, and I do believe we need to use a consulting firm, again, in the future if we decide not to go with Coventry or when we do another RFP. But I guess my question was, do we really need them this year, and are they going to be performing the same amount of services this year because it's going to cost us the same as they have in the past few years? And I guess that's my question.
I, we, since I've been back, the Human Resource Department is about half the size as what it was twelve years ago. We have less people, and we have used consultants, particularly this arrangement with Silverstone to assist us in a number of areas where we just did not have the staff or the expertise. I can go through the list of the projects. We, the Coventry contract, the evaluation of that, the wellness implementation, open enrollment, we need to improve and make sure that that could, can be a more successful online enrollment and better employee communications, audit of our pharmacy expenditures, looking at the voluntary benefits that we have, assisting us in analyze our workers' compensation claims experience, and our safety programs and identifying areas where we might have some targeted training to reduce that, Affordable Care Act consulting, and also in our collective bargaining and negotiating around issues of employee benefits. So those are the topics that we have, at least on the agenda for two thousand and fourteen, and we really look forward to working with them and absolutely need this expertise. Otherwise, we would not be able to provide these services.
Well, and you stated since, I know you've come back, I'm not sure how many years you were out of.
It was twelve years ago.
Twelve. And you stated that the department's about half the size, is that correct?
Yes.
And we appreciate how hard you work, and I know how hard Stephanie works, so that if you were to lose Silverstone for the next year, I guess what I'm asking you to do is tell me how many people you would need to hire to replace the services they're providing, and what's, is this a savings for us?
Well, the value that Silverstone brings in terms of being a consulting company is, it's not just one person or two person. We have the benefit of the expertise of the entire department. So we have the expertise of employee benefits experts, we have the expertise of the insurance experts, we have expertise of the lawyers that are associated. So there's probably five or six folks that we work with at Silverstone that assist us in managing our employee benefits. You know, we would have to hire several people, and we would have to hire high-level people that have experience in this area that is really a rapid-changing, very technical area. We have the benefit with Silverstone is, we have the whole company that has assisted in advising us as opposed to just having an individual employee. We, you know, there's a fine balance between adding employees and entering into consulting arrangements. I think this is one, this is a huge amount of money that the city invests in terms of in employee benefits, and this is an area where we need to have the best, and we need to have the resources in terms of assisting us in managing that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pauls.
If you have a question, how do you, how do consulting groups do you work with? Eight ones.
Primarily Silverstone and a company called IO Solutions, and they assist us in the employee testing. So those really are the two primary. Oh, the third one is CorVel. CorVel is, assists us in the workers' compensation management, but those are the primary consulting arrangements.
Okay, so this is my question. Staff has been reduced, so we're using consultants for the most part to fill in those gaps because of their professional, their expertise that we do not have within the department, which I understand. So apparently what we're doing is we're saying less government and utilizing the business world or the private world to help us out.
Absolutely. We're taking, you know, we are a consumer of services here in the community because this is, this is an area that we need some expertise. So we're investing in the community.
Right, but what I'm trying to get across is less government indirectly with personnel, but we're hiring more consultants to help us, which is, is that true or not?
Well, certainly the current status is that there are more consultants than there certainly have been in the past. There are less employees than there have been in the past, so we have less cost in terms of employee salary and the benefits associated with that. Now, have we gone too far? I think that's certainly a question that we need to continually ask ourselves. Should, are there some areas, and I think the directors would agree, there are some areas where we need to add more full-time employees, and that that would be a benefit to city government and to the taxpayers.
Okay. I know you can cut so deep that it does hurt the.
I think we're there.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to, to get, you think we've cut as deep as we can, we need consultants to help us. Are we doing this in a very efficient way, in your opinion?
I think we've retained the best consultants. I think we have some excellent city employees, and I think the city employees sometimes get a bad rap because they work really hard for limited resources in terms of the things that are available to them in terms of development and promotional opportunities and that type of thing. But yeah, we have the benefit of both city employees and consultants.
I will agree with you. My short tenure here, working with some of the people in the city that I've run across, they're second to none. I don't see them.
There are some really, really, and I've had the, I've had the benefit of working at a number of places, and some of the best employees I've seen here at the city, and oftentimes they don't get the credit for the expertise and the service that they provide.
Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights.
We got a motion in a second. We have a motion in a second.
Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number forty-nine, resolution that the portion of claims of the Drover at twenty-one, twenty-one South Seventy-third Street for refund of restaurant and drinking place's occupation tax is denied. We have an amendment.
Public carion on item number forty-nine is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none any opponents, public carion's closed.
No, yes, they're not. They're not.
Okay. Public carion is closed.
(laughing).
Just a moment. Yes.
Can be adopted.
The amendment changes the amount from four thousand, sixty-four dollars and seventy-one cents to four thousand, thirty-five dollars and forty-five cents. It's being denied.
And this is unusual enough, we may want to have an explanation from a financer from law, but I see Councilman Thompson has his light on.
Mr. Mungard is here.
Thank you, Mr. President. My colleagues, forgive me for not being able to make this morning's meeting, but this is in my district, and I need just a little bit of explanation. Tom, if you could kind of give me a overall, the whole thing, especially the statute limitation part.
Okay, Tom Mungard, Deputy City Attorney. As I understand it from the information the finance has given me, when the restaurant tax began, the Drover, in their calculations, did not completely follow the directions that had been sent out, and when they made the calculation, they calculated the sales tax first and then the restaurant tax, both of which are calculated on a percentage basis. As a result of that, the restaurant tax was high, because the proper way to do it is the reverse. First, you calculate the restaurant tax, and then you calculate the sales tax. They had it reversed, which resulted in paying too much in restaurant tax and not enough in sales tax. So they've got a problem with the state in that they've underpaid their sales tax. That was not discovered until Finance Department audited the restaurant, the Drover, and it was pointed out to them that they were overpaying the restaurant tax. So they went through the process of making a claim, because the statutes require that a particular process be followed to make a claim for refund of taxes or refund, or a claim of what's owed from the city. You have to submit an affidavit, you have to, has to be itemized, et cetera. So they went through that process. Well, by the time this had been discovered, we were, quite some period, almost two years, passed when they had began pay, overpaying this. The statutes put an eighteen-month time period on it, and the way the statutes are written, it appears to us that the city doesn't have the authority to voluntarily give back taxes that were paid in error prior to that eighteen-month time period. You only get to go back eighteen months. The statutes put the burden on the taxpayer to first get it right, and then secondly, if you didn't get it right, you have to assert your claim within this time period. If you don't, then the city has relied upon those taxes, put it in their budget, and it could be a large amount of money, and if the city then can just go back and voluntarily give back taxes, the other taxpayers have been shorted. We've followed this process before. A few years back, there was a substantial, almost hundred-thousand-dollar claim by somebody who had overpaid the telephone occupation tax, and the same process was followed, that no, you can't get it back if it goes beyond eighteen months. And so that's why this has been calculated, that the only part that can go back is the part that was paid within the last eighteen months, and that's roughly eight thousand bucks. The amendment reflects that there's a disagreement on the calculation between the Drover and the Finance Department. There were two, actually, two different documents submitted, two different amounts, so the calculations were different, and it's been decided just to go ahead with the Drover's calculation rather than the other one. So that's why there's a thirty-nine-dollar change there. That's why we've ended up with, the taxes that were paid within the last eighteen months get to go back, but those that were paid in error before, we believe the law prevents you from giving those back.
I'm just curious, is there ever a case when a citizen owes us, and it's past eighteen months, but we still get to go and get our taxes back?
Yes, the statutes, the statutes are written in favor of the taxpayer, the general taxpayers, not in favor of the taxpayer who makes the error.
Okay. It's, it's two comments. It's kind of sad that they did overpay, and now they have to still pay the state for sales taxes. Is that correct?
Well, that's up to them, but it appears from the calculations that, yeah, the sales tax would have been short, and I don't know whether they've corrected that or not.
Okay.
That's with the state.
It, I understand the law, but there just seems to be something wrong with it. I am disappointed, however, that, is there anyone from the Drover here?
I spoke with them Friday and explained what was happening and what the process was. They, they have the right to appeal the decision to District Court whether they're here or not.
Okay.
Whether they do is up to them.
Okay.
I would make a pitch that sometimes audits of the restaurant taxpayers, tobacco taxpayers, comes under criticism. This error was found by an audit. If that audit hadn't occurred, they would continue to improperly and overpay their taxes.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Well, I'm not impressed that they're not, that they're not here now, although perhaps the strategy is to go ahead and fight it in court, but I'll yield the mic and ask my colleagues to vote their conscience on this one.
Thank you, Ms. Milton.
I have a question. I understand the way the statute reads. It's my opinion that I think that statute is very one-sided.
Yes, it is.
And maybe unfair, in a court of equity, I think I may order that this be returned. I want to ask you that question. If I was sitting here as a, as a District Court Judge, I would have to follow what the statute says. I mean, I would think that's what a judge would most likely have to do and say, go change the statute. But I'm also sitting here, I mean, this owner is a constituent and a taxpayer and has overpaid his taxes, and I'm just wondering if paying him back what he's overpaid wouldn't be fair. I mean, that seems like that would be the fair thing to do.
Well, I think the statute's written the way it is because it recognizes some practicalities of governmental budgets, that if you could go back a much longer period of time, basically the city has taken it in, has spent it, and the only way to get the money is to now tax additional taxpayers. And so, for example, if you went back and granted this whole thing, this whole, the whole amount, and you didn't have a contingency reserve, you didn't have extra money sitting around, the only way you could pay the Drover is to go collect more money from all the other taxpayers in Omaha to pay the Drover, even though the Drover's the one that made the mistake. And so the statute is written with the practicalities of, at times, this could be a very large amount of money. It could mean just that, that a special tax has to be imposed to collect money to pay these people back, and so they've come to the balance of, well, if you make a mistake, if you're a taxpayer and makes a mistake, you get eighteen months. After that, well, the whole taxpayer base wins, you lose.
So maybe businesses need to make sure they're using an accountant that has malpractice insurance, I guess.
It's true of all, basically true of all the claims that get to be made against the city. If you think the city owes you money, you better speak up within that eighteen months or you may not get it back.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jaram.
Yes, I just want to make sure that the Drover knows that I've done my part to help them create this mess by eating there, and that I and my law partners will continue to do so, because it's a great restaurant, and they do a wonderful job, and the food is great.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second. No.
This on the amendment.
On the amendment? Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
This is to change the amount?
Yes.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Second.
Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Based on the fact that they're not here, yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
For the same reasons as Councilman Thompson, I wish, I wish they would have come here today, so yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted as amended seven to. We're going to bring up, we're going to bring up item number eighty-one next. It's an additional resolution. Resolution that the purchase of television production equipment from AVI Systems for use by the Omaha Cable Television Access Corporation and its public access television studios hereby approved.
Public carion on item number eighty-one is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none any opponents, public carion's closed. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to take the opportunity to, more than anything else, thank Dean Miller, but thank our entire. but thank our entire staff. I don't think going into this, people recognized what a difficult task it was going to be attempting to put a television station together when the city council is not in the television business. And a number of things I told them have come to pass. The fact that we have a station up and running is almost a miracle because normally it would take somewhere in the neighborhood of three to five years. I have to tell you, for example, Channel 7, when I was working there, before I left Channel 7 in 2008, two years prior to that, they had started the process of looking for land to purchase or building to retrofit, and we see them going into the old Burlington, but it took about seven or eight years to address that. And you have to find a specific kind of building. You just can't go into any building and put together a television station. So, my thanks and my hat is off to the work that our staff did, our city council staff, and in particular, Dean Miller, and the work that the individuals that we contracted with, Jim Nelson and others, who are operating this thing. I don't know if you've seen it lately, but Channel 22 looks vastly different than it did a few years ago, has a much better look and has a much better sound. We still have a ways to go before it is officially open, but it was opening, it's opening significantly faster than I thought it was going to open, given what I knew about, you know, how television stations work and what it's going to take to get that done. So, I'm supportive of this and again, I wanted to thank the staff because they did a yeoman's job of putting this together. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pauls.
Yes, I, I just want to say I have attended the last couple of board meetings and if there were merit pay, Dean does, would deserve it. But I'm also very impressed with the new board members that we got on board. They are just, the questions, the depth of knowledge, so give some of us new people a chance too now here on this board. But they, I must say, I see the future as quite bright. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted 7-0. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on agenda items 50 through 51 shall be held on third reading. Ordinance on second reading, item number 52. Ordinance declared necessity of acquiring private property for the purpose of the Nicholas Street sewer extension Phase 2 CSO.
Public hearing on item number 52 is today. Are there any proponents?
Yeah, later on.
Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
53. Ordinance to approve a contract with Allegiant Creighton Health to provide, through the EAP program, a licensed mental health provider to act as the mental health coordinator for the Omaha Police Department's peer support program.
Public hearing on item number 53 is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number 54. Ordinance to amend section 23-1, 23-235, and 236 to limit part-time employees to work no more than 28 hours per week and 1,456 hours per year and to limit seasonal employment to a duration not to exceed 26 consecutive weeks or 1,456 hours per year starting January 1, 2014.
Public hearing on item number 54 is today. Proponents? Mr. Carrigan, please.
Good afternoon, Steve Carrigan, Assistant HR Director. Here to answer any questions. I answered some questions and I, you've been briefed on a lot of this, but I'm here to answer any further questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 55. Ordinance to amend section 23-177 by adding the employment classification entitled Executive Services Administrator.
Public hearing on item number 55 is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 56. Ordinance to amend almost code section 36-220 and 36-287 to clarify the definition of parking meter checker who may enforce the parking meter laws of the City of Omaha.
Public hearing on item number 56 is today. Are there any proponents?
Ken Smith, Public Works, Park Manager. I'm basically here to answer any of your questions you may have this time, so.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerome.
Yes, Mr. Smith, could you tell us briefly what the purpose and the need is for this?
I'm actually glad you answered, asked that because, and Ms. Frost was up here talking about consultants doing type services, and it's very similar to that. We're basically, provides us the flexibility to switch to a different program change. We're looking at Parking Ambassador Program. I, the Downtown Improvement District's been using ambassadors to kind of welcome visitors to the downtown stuff, and we want to expand some of that program. Kind of a dual purpose here. They'll also be doing parking enforcement, but also be doing ambassador program. So, that's what we're looking at doing, and this provides us the most flexibility as far as staffing. If we have events that come up, we can bring staff in to help us, you know, ramp up to that type of service that we need to accomplish our goals here.
So, the purpose is to expand the service from merely collecting the money and issuing citations to an ambassador type dual role or?
No, it's more of a in-parking communications key to that. So, the ambassador program will basically allow the enforcement staff to be boots on the ground, be out on the street, talk to the businesses, the visitors, and work on that. I think the thing I've always told my programs in the past is that I'd rather see you talking and handing out more maps and information than you are doing parking citations. The program allows us the flexibility to bring in staff if we need it for events such as the World Series or Orpheum Events or other things and work around those events versus just to a set standard of hours or staff, whatever we have limited at this time.
Who handles the money and the collections from the meters under this? If you, could, could the private company do it as this ordinance is?
It will be the contractor handling the money, and they are bonded insured to do that.
And who determines their, their pay? Is it the private company?
Um, that is.
How they're compensated? It's all handled by the company that?
It's kind of a negotiation deal. We work through that. We have a budget that we prepare. I asked them to provide me a budget based on their staff that they will work on. They have performance standards they need to meet as far as hours operations and things that we, so it's kind of a negotiated process, and then we work to a number that fits both of us. So, salaries and benefits, all those things negotiate through the contract.
What is the current employee classification and salary range for a parking meter person within Public Works?
I did not check that before I came here. I didn't look into it.
Okay. One of the things I think I see you trying to accomplish is to give you the flexibility within the department should you want to privatize those services to do so. And I guess I'd like to know what assurances the public have that the actual service level will be improved, meaning, address the concern by some who've contacted me that if you do privatize, that the collection attendants may be part-timers and you may not, they may not be compensated well, they may not, you may get what you pay for, in other words, in terms of the quality of service. The other thing I've heard, so if you can address that, another thing I've heard is, well, how will the public know that this private person is, has the authority in the case of a citation to actually issue the citation so that there's less chances for copy, you know, people who are out fraudulently representing themselves as a parking meter attendant writing tickets and then misrepresenting themselves? So, if you could address those two things.
I don't like to use the word in privatizing on this. It's more of a contractual basis. Privatizing usually talking about concessions-type arrangements where they're participating in the revenue that's coming in, and that is not the case here. So, I'd like to use a contracted service that we're using as kind of a hybrid approach to what you've seen like in city like Chicago or other places that actually privatized it and got a lump sum of money for it. We want to maintain the control of our curbside management and our off-street facilities. That's what we're looking at doing here with this contract. As far as the question of regarding the, if the authority, the authorities can become through these ordinances that we're looking at doing here. And we'll probably post IDs. Most likely, I'll try to see if we can get a city ID that eliminates or that identifies them as employee of this, not employee of the city, but a contractor of the city. So, we'll have IDs and such, and that's something within their uniforms, their IDs and other things that will identify them as a employee that's authorized to do this type of function.
The, one of the things that, the way it currently works is people may not see a uniform on the current parking meter people. They see the city vehicle, they see the city ID, so there is that assurance that they have that the person they're dealing with or who is issuing the citation does in fact have legitimacy of being an employee of the city. Will there be uniforms that these people will wear or do you go that route on contracted services?
Yes, you're correct. There's usually a uniform process. Again, we negotiate that and we'll look at those different type things. We'll work with our parking advisory board that we've established and try to identify uniforms, policies, other things, and they'll help us work through those processes. For me and from a, I guess, a corporate identity, I like to create the City of Omaha as the front for the parking services and the contractor operates in the background. So, everything, it's going to look, it's going to feel, it's going to seem like a city service, but it's going to be through a contracted employee.
And what happened, how many people are in that role right now, employees of the city, and then what happens to those people?
There are approximately seven positions that were identified in the budget. Those employees were shared with the Traffic Division. Through attrition and through retirements and others, they've, they've gone, we've gotten down to a number where they will just stay. Those that are remaining will just stay in traffic, so there's not going to be any job losses here.
Okay. Is there a monetary or budgetary or enterprise fund balance considerations that are going into this that you haven't articulated yet?
Yes. 2013 was the first year for the enterprise fund. And so, we've basically trying to get a cost recovery action through this fund, which we'll probably try to identify through management what our costs are going to be for issuing those citations, make sure we're charging the appropriate fees and fines to make sure we're doing a cost recovery of that. And that will also go into the off-street side, the collections, all those things. So, we're really in cost recovery mode.
The last area I want to talk about is the downtown parking study that the Business Improvement District from the downtown area commissioned. You familiar with that?
Yes.
And it's made some recommendations in terms of shifting around the way we do things, both in terms of premium parking areas to hopefully drive people to parking garages and those who want to park in front of the door of the restaurant perhaps pay a higher price, which would then discourage the employees who are working in that restaurant or store or business from parking in front of that place, but using alternative means as a goal, as well as other considerations. And I think another major goal was to expand to, into the evening hours and Saturdays. So, to what extent does this play into that and where are you in implementing those?
We're still kind of laying the foundation to get those changes to take place. I'd hate to have, you know, put the horse for the cart here, or the cart for the horse, I'm sorry, to kind of get things going. So, we're kind of laying the groundwork here to make sure we have the process, the staff and the organization in place to manage the changes that are going to come about. I think we're getting there. We're going to look at doing some maybe marketing, again, creating that corporate identity of parking information, who you can contact, where you can go. You know, we're looking at a citation management system right now. We're testing that. So, there's online payments for that coming. There's a phone app and a pay-by-phone, and we're looking for the parking meter. So, we're kind of laying the groundwork right now to establish that before we start implementing the new rates because if you have those things in place and the communication process are working, hopefully those will kind of come in a little bit easier to the public.
The last area is the issue of the concerns by the handicap community as to addressing their needs for parking, which had been provided on a no-charge basis in the meters and in the garages, and there were some people who had raised concerns. Did that get resolved yet to a new process? You were working on that?
Yes, we do have a policy in place to handle the handicap parking procedures now.
Okay. Thank you for your time. Joe?
Joe Guttenrath, Downtown Improvement District.
So, Joe, where does the Downtown Improvement District come in in terms of proponent, opponent, neutral on this particular item of giving the parking manager in the city the option if they so choose to contract out these services?
Yeah. We are in support of giving the department and the Parking Division the tools that they believe are necessary to achieve the goal of a more efficient and effectively managed parking system that prioritizes customer service and the folks who come downtown to utilize our parking system.
And have you been told that you'll be included in the process of a stakeholder group? I think you're already in one for a parking meter.
Yeah, yeah. The Parking Advisory Group, Ken has done a great job of assembling a very reputable group of individuals who are involved in virtually all aspects of downtown and has been bringing us along through all of the changes, listening to our comments, concerns, and recommendations and, and taking appropriate action based on our input.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gurnat.
Ken?
Ken Smith, Public Works.
Did I hear you correctly that no one will be losing a job with this?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. I've been around for a long time, and every time that there's a program change, there's somebody or a few people that always get the plaid rabbit and they're out the door. And I'm, it bothers me when we, it comes down to we change, we put in a phrase or we change a word that all of a sudden, somebody's out the door. That bothers me. And I would imagine it bothers the union people too. And I'm, I'm hoping that they're going to be involved in the discussions as we, as we move along. Does, what's before us today on the public hearing, does it eliminate the flexibility that the city has in using that position currently as a means to help our limited-duty people get back into full service for the city? Does it eliminate that possibility?
I think currently, right now, the Traffic Division, we've basically been using their staff to do the parking enforcement and collections. And unfortunately, it's kind of, has been balanced because in the winter, when it's not as busy downtown or the Old Market, and they're not as busy either, we got a lot of enforcement staff out there. So, we have a heavy hand enforcement in the winter when we really don't need it. And likewise, in the summer, we've seen when they have a lot of duties where they're doing striping and things, signage and things that they can do and because of weather related, we don't, and we have a lot of activities where we need more enforcement in the summer, it's kind of been offset. So, hopefully this will bring some balance to that. Like I said, we got lucky this year with, through attrition, retirements, people leaving the city, that we're able to get by without any job loss at this moment.
Joe?
Joe Guttenrath, Downtown Improvement District.
Are, are you in line with this hope that?
You know, I, I would say where we were at just a few years ago when we conducted this study, I mean, parking wasn't being managed. And now, we've, we've come light years. It's a compliment to the, to the Public Works Department, the Parking Division, the council who has come along with this study, making changes to, to come to a system that is being managed and operated effectively and efficiently. And so, when we are talking about future changes down the line in terms of hours and possible days of managing parking system in the evenings and on Saturdays, it's going to be very important that the people who are out on the street, they're going to be crossing the. that the people who are out on the street, they're going to be crossing the paths of a lot more visitors, a lot more people to our city, they're going to be creating more and more impressions. So when I talk about that end goal of being very sound, customer-service-based system, I believe that is one of the ultimate goals, and I would support the department's attempts to ensure that they're able to achieve that goal by, by providing that type of flexibility that this item does for them.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. No further lights.
Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, third reading and public hearing on agenda items 57 through 65 shall be held on January 28. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7C, the public hearing on agenda items 66 through 80 shall be held on second reading. On the supplement, pursuant to City Council Rule 7C, the public hearing on agenda items 83 through 86 shall be held on second reading.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President? 311.